I understand.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask if we have any announcements from the dais?
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Alderman, my parliamentarian. Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Beremis.
Absent.
Doiter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Hill.
Absent.
Palomsky.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Bastido.
Here.
Eleven present, two absent, one vacancy.
All right, eleven present, two absent, one vacancy. We have a quorum. Any announcements from the dais? I have one. When we get to item seven, committee reports, the 348 Larch, I anticipate that there will be a motion made by one of the aldermen to continue this matter again for two weeks to the next council meeting. And there'll be, discussion is of course invited, and it may or may not pass, but I also wanted to state that part of the reasoning is that we are going to hold a committee of the whole meeting next Monday, and at which time we will have a person who is an expert on fair housing, including sober houses, that will be available to the council, will make a presentation to help educate us, and we will have a mechanism whereby council members will be able to ask questions. And it's my hope that this further information taken in conjunction with the statements made by residents at the last meeting will then allow us to pick it up two weeks from now and be a more educated and informed vote. But I'll leave it at that for now. Item four, receipt of written communications from the public. If anyone has a written communication that they would like to submit to the council, raise your hand, and we'll have you bring it up to Clerk Tamer. Alderman Palomsky?
I do have an announcement.
I'm sorry. Back to you. We're going back to announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce that on June 24th, 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., Alderman Chris Jensen and I will be hosting a Third Ward Town Hall here at City Hall. And we're thinking around 7:15, we'll be starting a presentation on the development of the North York Corridor. And welcome, Third Ward residents, but because it's a public meeting, all can attend. Hope to see you. Thanks.
Thank you. And since I have to have the last word, I will say the committee of the whole meeting will be after our regular committee meetings. I'll ask the chairs to terminate them by eight o'clock so that we can meet here in the chamber for the committee of the whole meeting. All right. Item 5.1, public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak, to address the council on any matter they so choose. Ask that you state your name. Address is optional, but may help us follow up with you. And with that, Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, Mayor. I have Ann Gurlucky Anderson.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Would you state your name and then proceed? You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Ann Anderson. I live at 344 North Larch. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have used my voice to share concerns on the case, case 19P14 regarding 348 North Larch, every time this has been brought up for discussion, and I'm grateful for the chance to do so again tonight. Thank you for agreeing that it's necessary in initiating steps to facilitate training on the Fair Housing Act and sober living facilities and other laws applicable to this situation. I appreciate that the council members have a desire for knowledge and full information prior to casting a vote that can alter our community. I remind you that the issue you consider is greater than one block in this city. The decision you make regarding accommodations for this property will influence zoning regulations for the entirety of Elmhurst. Each time my neighbors and I have appeared before you physically, virtually, or with our written words, we express a desire to keep the zoning as it is for a residential community, with four unrelated residents in the property. A supportive lifestyle that is sober can flourish with four men just as it can with eight in the home. If the intent of the homeowner and the ministry is not to make money, then having four men in the home should be a welcome option. My neighbors and I repeatedly indicate that our emotions are with yours. We support second chances, and third, and fourth. Many of us have experiences and loved ones with persons in recovery. Many of us work in the health and social services field. Those are feelings and emotions, however, and they're not relevant to the discussion. We're looking at ordinances, zoning regulations, and laws. When I spoke last month, my statement ended with a question. I asked, how can you vote yes when you do not fully understand the issue? I applaud your efforts to become more educated of the laws surrounding fair housing and zoning in Elmhurst and best practices related to sober living. I look forward to learning more, and I will continue to share my perspective as a homeowner on Larch Avenue and in this city of Elmhurst. Thanks.
Thank you.
Reed Stanton.
I don't see Mr. Stanton here. We'll move on to the next one and see if he comes in.
Okay, thank you. Jay Webb. Tim Glenon, Glenon.
My name is Tim Glenon. I live at 373 Larch. I've lived there for 18-plus years at this point, and I did speak at the last meeting. Kind of where I was going with that was the supervision. How was it going to happen? Is there going to be any supervision? I took a look at the letter that was drafted for April 27th. This had five conditions for approving a permit, and my big question is, how are these things going to be enforced? History is on my side of this issue, at least for, if we're counting on the honor system here of the residents of the home, or the owner of the home, or the guy that's managing the home, if we're counting on the honor system, there is going to be no enforcement or supervision whatsoever. History has kind of shown that enforcement happens when it's the last possible option with this particular landlord. And I will say for the record that I am not against the sober house. I'm not against, I mean, there's an unlimited amount of people who need this kind of service, but having to bend the ordinances without really, where's the checks here? I don't see, I don't see too many. I'm wondering who's going to enforce? How are we going to know if more than seven people are in the home? How are we going to know if people are following the rules at the home? How are we going to, you know, for these ADA requirements? What actual requirements would be necessary? How are they going to be enforced? Is the place going to be inspected? You know, if for some reason there's another group comes in or something like that, you know, how do we, how do we know that these things are, people are following the rules? Other than hearsay, I mean, basically personal testimonies of people, I don't see how that's going to happen. And I just leave you with this question is, okay, these are some sort of common sense recommendations, I guess, but what's the enforcement? And with, if there's no teeth, it doesn't matter. That's all that's left for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Tamer?
Marsha Murray.
Hi, I'm Marsha Murray. Thank you. I'm also a resident of Larch and speaking on behalf of the zoning request for variance at 348. I just want to say from the beginning that myself, just like some of my, most of my other neighbors here, don't, we're not against a sober living home. We're not against people having third, fourth, fifth chances. Like our neighbor said, we all have people in our families and close family members and relatives who are in the same predicament. What we are against is the changing of the zoning to change it from four non-related people to allow eight non-related people, or seven, whatever, you know, house manager, however you want to call it. I personally don't have a problem with anyone who lives in the home. We see them regularly. We're outside all the time. It's not, that's not an issue. The issue is the zoning and the precedent that it sets for Elmhurst. We all live here, and we pay taxes, and we love our community, and we want our community to stay the way that we are all paying into it for. If you allow one building to do this, who's to say that the next can't do it and somebody else can't do it? Then the other thing that I think people should strongly consider is that we're all looking at Hinsdale and saying, look what they've done. Let's think about how they're handling a similar, not the same, situation. The next town that's dealing with this is going to look at Elmhurst and say, what did Elmhurst do? How did Elmhurst handle it? Did they just change the zoning and say, well, let's just have eight people live there now? They're going to pull all of our records the way we pull everything from Hinsdale so we educate ourselves. And we appreciate that you guys are going through the training and educating yourselves about how to deal with this issue, but you have to remember that the way we're looking at them, another town is going to look at every single one of the voting members and the issues and everything that we've done to see how they should handle it. So we appreciate you guys doing the training and getting educated on the issues, and I just want to say that I am against the change of the zoning, not the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin Ruse.
Justin Reese, 360 North Larch. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Echoing some of my other neighbors, we appreciate the council taking the opportunity, being given to them, to become educated among the issues regarding fair housing so you can make an informed decision on an issue that's been extremely important while it's been before you over two years, before our neighborhood, for many, many years before that. Again, echoing opposed to the rezoning for greater than four residents, a sober home can exist and flourish with four unrelated persons in there. This will change our neighborhood if it is approved for more than that. And when we look at things that are happening on other blocks, on other houses, things that are happening at the sober house are not happening in our other houses on there. We are not having deaths from overdoses. We are not having undercover police officers or parole officers showing up every other Friday. We don't have those things. We support the neighbors. We support the recovery, but we would like it limited to four.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mark, I can't read the last name, though.
Mark? Is there a Mark in the audience?
Sorry.
Hi, I'm Mark Rafin. Sorry if my handwriting was bad. And I live at 414 Verrett in Elmhurst. You know, I've gotten up and said a few words every time, and I don't really have anything new to add from the last time I said something. I'm usually at an AA meeting on a Monday night, so if I get an opportunity to talk for three minutes, I may as well just take it, right? And I appreciate, I complimented the attorneys for wanting to do something to move forward positively in helping what would be at the very low end, a sober house, a very high end, you know, a structured state-run facility. There's a lot of gray area in between. Our sober house is just that. It's somewhere in between. Seven men, four men. I'm sure if you went all the way around the town, you'd find many homes just like it that aren't on the radar because nothing's happened and no one's said anything. You know, a handful of weeks has passed by since the last time we all gathered, and what you've had in the last handful of weeks is seven men living soberly, going to work, filling out their checkbooks, connecting with their families, and just living life soberly. So getting educated, I compliment that, too. But, you know, at the end, at the end of the day, you're just looking at a handful of people that are sober and just want a variant. No one's trying to change zoning for, you know, permanently and have every house become something like this. Special permission for the one house that's already been established is what's being done. And again, only because I'm kind of new at this within the last year and a half, I do have a tremendous amount of empathy for the poor people on Larch Street for having had a terrible neighbor, I guess, for the last 20 years. Nothing can be driven home on that more than the evidence that he's been a horrifying neighbor. However, in the last couple of years, you've had a real good neighbor, and you've had some real quiet people that drink a lot less than most every house in America, and, you know, I encourage you guys to give, to give the special permission for this house to continue. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jennifer Mauer.
I'm a resident at 341 North Larch, and I am simply here today to reiterate some of what my neighbors have already said and what I said last time, but given the opportunity just to reiterate that my family is fully in support of a sober residence on Larch Avenue. We simply ask that the committee keep the zoning to four people. And regardless of what happens, wherever we land on this issue, we are neighbors, and we are going to be supportive of each other. I really appreciate that the committee is taking the time to educate themselves properly on the relevant laws. And really, we need to set a tone that ordinances and things should be followed. When variances want to be requested, they should be done so in a timely manner, in the proper way, with inspections adhered to in a timely manner. We've had some challenges in this area with that property, but we are moving forward. And I really want to say that, again, we are supportive of a sober home in our neighborhood. And my children will definitely be knocking on the door of 348 North Larch next year on Halloween.
Thank you.
That's it, Mayor. That's signed up.
All right. That is the last of those who have signed up. Is there, are there other people who want to take advantage of public comment that have not signed in? If so, raise your hand. We have one, sir. If you would, push it over to the microphone.
My name is Dan Liebert. I'm a resident of Larch Avenue as well. I felt compelled to come up here and speak and use my three minutes as well to just reiterate my comments from previous meetings. First and foremost, I am supportive of a sober living facility, four unrelated people within the zoning. I feel like that is very reasonable, and I think it's something that we've planned for as a community very diligently. I think one of the strengths of Elmhurst is the city planning. I think we can all say that Elmhurst has grown beautifully, that the town is very attractive, very vibrant, and on some core principles, right? Very walkable, dense downtown, built around keeping true to the zoning. I also feel like, since this has gone on for over two years, or about two years now, I think you'll find that we're all compelled to be here because the more we've gotten educated on the issue, the more we feel reason to stand up and say, hey, let's, both of these things can exist. The Fair Housing Act can exist within our current zoning. One doesn't have to supersede the other. We can have both. And so really, our main point of emphasis that you hear us echo quite often at these meetings is, well, let's keep this to four or less within our current zoning. We're supportive of the facility. We're supportive of the nature of the home. I think that's, that holds true to the Fair Housing Act. But I think we all value how Elmhurst is structured, and that is what we bought into as a community. This is not my thing. I am not a person that is polarizing or interested in getting politically involved typically, but you'll see me here at every meeting because this is something that I value, I feel strongly about, and the more I've gotten educated on it, the stronger I feel about it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wanted? Mr. Webb?
I'm Jay Webb, manager of 348 Larch sober home, and I really appreciate some of the comments and tonight, you know, the, a lot of, we've heard of the past of the house and what's happened there, and I like to see that we're talking about getting past that area. The members of the House have worked hard to put and let go of our pasts, and I see, I feel like the neighbors are kind of doing that in the last few meetings and putting that aside. I mean, it's, it's something to let go and go forward, and I like that. As far as the four in the house, it calls for accommodations in the law, and we have seven bedrooms. It's a big house, and financially, it would be hard for four people to cover the mortgage and the bills and what they're doing with paying fines, making amends, financial amends to their family and friends that they've hurt in the past and any number of things. We're trying to get them built up so they can move on. Sober living is the single most, with a good program, is the single most effective way of reaching long-term recovery, and that's the part we play. We're playing a little part here. This is a three-quarter house. This is their last stop. But by bringing these people out of the halfway houses where it's more strict, in our little way, we've opened up more space in those rooms, in those places, for people coming right out of treatment. So it's, it's something that we need. It's covered in the law and that, but I'd be open to transparency once we get this all cleared up and on what's going on with the committee and the community in the neighborhood. I have nothing wrong with that. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. All right, we will close public forum at this point. I will go on to item six, the consent agenda, and I will want to say to the members of the council and to the public, we're going to do things a little differently on consent agenda. We've received an unbinding opinion with some guidance from the Attorney General's office, which indicates that we should be, as we do with other agenda items, we sort of read the resolution or what we're going to be voting on. So on the consent agenda, we will be, I will have Clerk Tamer read each item and what the title is before we vote. And before I call for a motion, actually, we should call for the motion first. I get to read it first. All right. So we're going to read it first, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, and we will proceed as we have as always in the past. No, she'll read it first, and then we'll do it. All right. So if you're all warmed up, Clerk Tamer, this is your addition here for reading consent agenda. If you want to go on to the national stage, continue.
Thank you. 6.1 minutes of the executive session meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on April 19th, 2021. 6.2 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on May 17th, 2021. 6.3 accounts payable, May 27th, 2021. Sitka total being $3,595,489.42. 6.4 referral to PW&amp;B Committee, potential sidewalk policy revision. 6.5 referral to P.A. and S. Committee, parking restriction on Emory Ann Howard. 6.6 report, case number 20P-17, Lincoln School Preliminary and final PUD with site development allowances. 6.7 report Senate Bill 2298. 6.8 report case number 20P-21, multi-properities conditional use permit for a planned unit development. 6.9 report approval in agreement with CompCorePro. 6.10 report sewerage treatment for private well users. 6.11 report Elmhurst Running Club, four on the fourth, 2021 Run. 6.12 report Elmhurst City Center, 2021 Rock the Block. 6.13 report Explore Elmhurst Community Grants. 6.14 report custodial maintenance of parking decks and pedestrian tunnel contract. 6.15 report street light pole painting. 6.16 report walk behind concrete saw trailer. 6.17 report walk behind concrete saw. 6.18 report traffic signal controller purchase. 6.19 report 2021 pavement striping program. 6.20 report 2021 crack ceiling and seal coating program. 6.21 report 2021 concrete pavement patching program. 6.22 report intergovernmental agreement, City of Elmhurst and Elmhurst School District 205, Emerson Elementary School. 6.23O-31-2021, an ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to section 3.16 of Elmhurst Municipal Code and pursuant to 65 ILCS 511-1-6. And 6.24R672021, a resolution regarding the release of certain closed session minutes.
Let's do it one more time with feeling. All right. I know it takes a few minutes, but it brings us in compliance. So at this point, as the way we used to conduct it, I will ask, is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to have removed from the consent agenda? All right, there being none, may I have a motion to pass the consent agenda? Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Hanquist.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Beremis absent. Doiter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Hill. Absent. Palomsky.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent, one vacancy.
Eleven ayes, two absent.
Yeah, zero nays, two absent.
Zero nays, all right. Consent agenda passes, and we'll move on to committee reports, item seven. Clerk Tamer?
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the City Council approve the requested conditional use permit with five conditions. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for City Council approval. Signed Michael Hanquist, Chair, Mark Mulliner, Vice Chair, Bob Dunn, Alderman Second Ward.
Thank you. We have a motion to put this before committee, Alderman Hanquist, before the council, Alderman Hanquist, second Alderman Mulliner. Thank you. All right, turn it over to Alderman Hanquist.
Turn it over to pass it back.
Yeah.
So to the mayor's, thank you, Mayor, to the mayor's comments, we're going to defer until the next city council meeting so that next week we can do some training after committee meetings. So that's the statement of where we are tonight. I don't know if we need a motion to that, Mayor, or?
I think we do need a motion.
So I guess I'll wait for comments, but those are my comments, still.
All right. Alderman Dunn.
Well, regarding this particular topic, I'm pleased that so many residents have come out and speaking on both sides of this issue at this meeting, the last meeting as well, and, you know, continual contact with the aldermen up here to let us know your opinion and, you know, very, very well researched, and that's fantastic that the residents are so engaged in this issue. But as the mayor said, we do have a session scheduled for next week to get a little more technical detail, some legal, more legal information surrounding this topic and fair housing. So at this point, I'm going to make a motion that we postpone this particular report till a date certain, which is two weeks from tonight, June 21st, and where we again would pick the topic up.
All right, we have a second on the motion. Alderman Palomsky, any discussion on the motion to continue to a date certain being June 21? Alderman Toledo?
Just to clarify for folks in the audience what a date certain means. Would you like to do that, or I can't, I mean, I can do so, but just for the, for the audience members, a date certain means that on that date, it will get voted on. I don't believe that there's any provisions in Roberts rules to allow it to be extended past that with the date certain.
There probably is a Roberts rules provision that would let you do that, but I think the intent is what you said, Alderman.
Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Vreemis absent. Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Hill absent. Palomsky.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent. The motion passes, and the matter will be taken up on June 21st. Item eight, ordinances, Clerk Tamer.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit for preliminary and final planned unit development with site development allowances for the demolition and reconstruction of an elementary school at the property commonly known as 565 South Fairfield Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois, which is Lincoln Elementary School, see item 6.6.
Have a motion to put this before the council? Alderman Mulliner, second Alderman Palomsky. Alderman Mulliner, deferred Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you. We, this is an approval preliminary and final for the Lincoln School reconstruction. We suspended the rules so that we could vote on the report and the ordinance together. This is for the rebuild, that was part of the referendum. No other information, any other questions?
All right, other comments or questions? All right, I think that's to accommodate getting construction underway there. Right, all right. All right, if there are no questions, comments, Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Vreemis absent. Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Hill absent. Palomsky.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent.
All right, eleven ayes, zero nays, two absents. The ordinance passes. Item nine, resolutions, Clerk Tamer.
A resolution by the City of Elmhurst, Illinois, opposing Senate Bill 2290, 2298, amending the Tax Increment Allocation Act of the Illinois Municipal Code, see item 6.7.
Can we have a motion to put this before Alderman Mulliner, second Alderman Palomsky?
Okay, yeah.
I'm not sure which order we're going in these days, but one of you should tell us about this. Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. From time to time, the council will vote on a resolution to issue support for an initiative that may be in its best interests. In this case, representatives from DuPage Mayors and Managers review potential bills and have recommended and have, you know, explained that TIP districts have been helpful to our community, not just for the city development, but also to our schools, and that should this bill pass, the TIPS that we have now would not have been possible, and that we, you know, we're encouraging our legislators to oppose this bill and on behalf of the City of Elmhurst.
I do want to add that this is, we, I asked to have this put on the agenda because it's more of a consent or approval of what I've already done, because if I waited until now, it would have been of no point. But I think the power of that resolution caused the General Assembly to do as we requested and not adopt that ordinance, but I still would like to proceed today for ratification of the action that I took, okay? Any other discussion? Clerk Tamer.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Vreemis absent. Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Hill absent. Palomsky.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two absent. The resolution passes. Item 10, reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials, 10.1, Mayor. I have two announcements. One is, we did tonight pass emergency powers again. I realize it doesn't look like there's much of an emergency passing. We've tied it to the governor's order, which is supposed to expire at the end of June. I may come back and you may not see it on the next agenda because things are that encouraging. Here we are, sitting without our masks, but I just wanted to let you know my thinking on that. Secondly, the deadline for fifth ward alderman applications was last Friday, but I heard some complaints that it was never published in The Independent, and I got some calls over the weekend. I am going to extend it to June 30th. Will not go beyond that. I know we have to fill the vacancy. No, I'm not trying to hold on to the position. So I will be on the website with a final deadline, and I'm looking forward to starting interviews of those who have applied. That's all for me. Item 10.2, City Manager Grabowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items. First, I want to start by thanking the staff, particularly Public Works, Fire, Police, for the response to the water main break last Thursday. Everybody knows, late in the afternoon, we got alerted to a drop in pressure. It was a major break that affected the entire north side of town. Quick action on Paul Burris's end and his staff helped to restore water pressure to that area. But then, of course, we were under a boil order. Just so people understand, the Illinois American Water area was kind of under their own boil order, and so they did their own testing and got results, I think about an hour before we got ours because they had to test less samples, so they got them into the lab quicker and they go in order. And so that's how Illinois American Water was able to put the word out sooner than us. But on Saturday, the boil order was lifted without any issue, and so I really appreciate all the efforts that staff put into, to doing that. Another informational item, the railroad crossing at the U.P. line in York will be closed starting tomorrow morning for 10 days for track replacement. It's going to be the same thing that they did at Arlington, so that'll be completely shut down. We've been getting the word out through City Center, the Chamber, and our own communications to do that. It's necessary. If you've been over the tracks, you see it's very bumpy and it's got some potholes going on, so for safety, they need to do that. Today, Deputy Chief Enish Evidson and I talked about homebound vaccinations. Our paramedics will be working with the paramedics from Villa Park and Oak Brook to administer vaccinations to homebound folks. Right now, we have 18 that we will be administering. If anybody knows of homebound people who want to be vaccinated, please let us know. You can contact me, you can contact Bill, you can go on our website. We are encouraging that and certainly available to do that. The latest museum exhibit had opened, To the Moon, soars with NASA. There are many activities that Dave and his staff have planned to support that, so encourage you to get tickets, right, Dave? We're still doing tickets online for that. And go see that wonderful exhibit that Dave and his team have put together. June Jazz will be at Elmhurst University, June 19th, that's Saturday, June 19th, at 6:30 PM in the quad, the gathering area in the middle of campus. That is back this year. We're happy to see that activity as we get back to a little bit of normal. And speaking of that, neighborhood roll calls have started. We had two of them so far, very successful and busy. The next one tomorrow night will be in the fifth ward. They are all listed on the police Facebook page, so if you go there, you'll find out where the roll calls for the week are. We do move them throughout town, try to be on the north side one day of the week, south side the next day of the week, and move them through the wards. So please go out, encourage your neighbors to go out and meet the police officers that patrol your neighborhood. They have some great information. You can ask any question that you want about police activity, and they have treats for the kids, so bring them out, too. And then last, let me apologize for the temperature in here tonight. Not sure what's going on with the air conditioning unit in this room. I know it's very warm, and my apologies, we're going to get that fixed.
All right, Wendy. All right. Thank you. On to item 11, other businesses. Is there any other business? Alderman Dunn, you have a report?
I do have a report.
Very good. I'm sorry, we're back to 10.
Okay, yeah, sorry, sorry for these 180s.
That's all right.
But just real quick, I just want to give a, an update on the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission, the ONCC, the full, the full committee had a meeting early May. Not a lot happened at that, other than a change in the executive leadership. So we have a new chair and a new vice chair of that committee, and I think they're, they have a long track record with the commission, the, the new chair and vice chair, and I think they're going to do a good job. As far as the Fly Quiet Subcommittee, we met about two weeks ago, new chair from that, from Schaumburg, and she took a different approach. We're discussing alternatives B and H, and we really focused on B last meeting and got approval of a rotation plan for B that was favorable to Elmhurst. And then we start talking about the departure paths for that. We got through a few, and then we ran out of time, so we're going to continue that discussion next meeting for those that are interested on the departures for alternative B and then go to H at some, some future meeting.
Thank you for your work on that, Alderman Dunn. Any other reports before we go on to other business? All right, item 11, other business. Is there any other business? Alderman Dunn.
No, I'm not going back to reports again. Other business. I just wanted to mention committees. When the committees turn over, we have pending items that are reviewed and determined whether to let those roll into the next committee or just let them expire. So the Finance Committee, we reviewed those pending items. There was about eight or so of those. Last meeting, the consensus of the committee was that we're going to look at, look at those next meeting. So if anyone wants to, any of the other aldermen want to weigh in on any of those referrals that are still out there, we're going to make decisions on those at the next meeting or even anybody from the public as well. So I just wanted to let folks know that. I know, I don't think the minutes came out from our last meeting yet, so I wanted to let the council know that.
Thank you. Alderman Brennan.
Mayor, I apologize. There was an announcement that I would like to cover if.
All right.
I could do that.
Please.
Thank you. So many may know, many may not know, but the month of June is Pride Month. So to celebrate Pride Month, the Elmhurst Pride Collective is, they're hosting a celebration this Wednesday at 6:30 to 8:00 PM in Wilder Park. It's the grassy area behind the Elmhurst Art Museum. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Brennan. Anyone else? All right, ready for a motion to adjourn. I feel like I should call on Alderman Dunn again. We have a motion, Alderman Mulliner, second, Alderman Cahill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We adjourn.